Okay, we'd like to start our, open our Planning Commission meeting. Today is November tenth. It is six oh one. Can we get our, can we all rise for the pledge allegiance?
Do I hand over your heart? My pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Can I get a roll call?
Commissioner Bautista?
Here.
Commissioner Gutierrez? Commissioner Weisenberger?
Here.
Commissioner Vice Chair Sparza?
Here.
Commissioner Chair Brago?
Mr. Chair, I do, I do have something I wanted to read.
Sure.
Prior to starting.
Okay, John.
So pursuant to Executive Order N dash twenty-nine dash twenty executed by the Governor of California on March seventeenth, two thousand and twenty, and as a response to the mitigating, in as a response to mitigating the spread of coronavirus known as COVID-nineteen, the regular meeting of the Planning Commission scheduled for Tuesday, November tenth, two thousand and twenty at six P M. will allow members of the public to participate and address the commission during the open session of the meeting via teleconference only. Thank you.
Thank you, John. All right, so next item, our approval of the minutes. Can I get, can we go over the minutes or review and get an approval of the minutes,
This is Commissioner Bautista's motion to approve the minutes.
Thank you. Will we get a second?
I'll second it.
Bernie Sparza, second. Roll call.
Commissioner Bautista?
Yes.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Yes.
Commissioner Weisenberger?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice Chair Sparza?
Yes.
Commissioner Chair Brago?
Oh, yes. All right. New business is condition, conditional use permit number eight-nine-two. A request from H G G, H G G Corp. to operate a warehouse distribution business with storage, packing, and shipping services at one-four-five-one-two Garfield Avenue in the M-two heavy manufacturing zone.
Yes, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. This is a request to operate a warehouse business that stores, packages, and ships merchandise for e-commerce businesses, and the property is located at one-five, one-four-five-one-two Garfield Avenue, and I'll be giving you the presentation. So again, here are the details. This is located in the M-two heavy manufacturing zone. I should note that the square footage of the suite in your staff report was incorrect. The correct square footage is twenty-five thousand seven-hundred-and-ninety-three square feet. And here's a look at the business park in the top photo on Garfield Avenue just south of Rosecrans, and the bottom photo shows the suite that will be occupied by the warehouse. And here's an aerial, Garfield's on the left, running north and south, Rosecrans is on the top, running east and west. The light industrial park is outlined in yellow, and the suite that would be occupied by the applicant is toward the back there, highlighted in blue. And here's a site plan, Garfield to the right, Rosecrans to the top, and the suite highlighted in blue. And this would be a warehouse for online businesses. The applicant proposes to operate from nine A.M. to six P.M. Monday to Friday. They would have two employees. There would be approximately two deliveries per day from FedEx and UPS, and then one shipment per day by the United States Postal Service. And we're recommending that you adopt Resolution Number P C twenty, twenty-zero-three-three, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from our commissioners?
No.
No.
Okay, this is an open hearing, and do we have anyone that's in favor or opposed, John?
Uh, no, no comments in favor or opposed.
Okay. Can I get a motion to adopt the Planning Commission Resolution two-zero-zero-three-three?
Oh, close the public hearing.
Oh, excuse me. Thank you, John. Can I get a motion to close the public hearing for permit number eight-nine-two?
So moved.
Can we get a second?
I'll second it.
George, roll call, please.
Commissioner Bautista?
Yes.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Yes.
Commissioner Weisenberger?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice Chair Sparza?
Yes.
Commissioner Chair Brago?
And now can we get a motion to adopt the Planning Commission Resolution Number P C
A motion to approve.
Commissioner Bautista, I'll second it.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Bautista?
Yes.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Yes.
Commissioner Weisenberger?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice Chair Sparza?
Yes.
Commissioner Chair Brago?
Yes. John, I apologize, I skipped the public comments section here.
Oh, no, no public comments.
No? Our next item is Zone Change Number Two-thirty. A request to change the official zoning map of the city of Paramount from C-three, C-dash-three general commercial to P D-dash-P S planning development with performance standards. Mixed-use commercial and senior assistant independent living facility at one-six-six-seven-five-dash-one-six-six-eight-three Paramount Boulevard in the C-dash-three general commercial zone.
Yes, Commissioner Chair Brago and commissioners, these two items, this item Zone Change Number Two-thirty, and then the next item, General Plan Amendment Number Twenty-dash-two, deal with a mixed-use senior living facility at the northwest corner of Paramount Boulevard and Seventieth Street. We are still preparing the agenda reports for this project, and it is recommended the Planning Commission open the public hearing for each item and continue the hearings to the December eighth, two thousand and twenty Planning Commission meeting.
Can I get a motion to continue the public, or excuse me, this is a public hearing? Can I get a motion to continue the public hearing to December eighth, two thousand and twenty?
This is Commissioner Bautista, I'll approve the motion to move the date.
Thank you. Second?
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Commissioner Bautista?
Yes.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Yes.
Commissioner Weisenberger?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice Chair Sparza?
Yes.
Commissioner Chair Brago?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you can, if this is for both items, that's acceptable because it's just a continuance. So for the record, this would be for item number three and number four, correct?
Yes.
So that, that motion and that decision would be a continuance of both of those items for the record.
Thank you, John. Okay, so. Well, we move to the zoning ordinance. Text Amendment Z O T A number nineteen. A request to allow and regulate indoor recreation and warehouse uses, uses in the Clearwater East Pacific Plan area.
Yes, Mr. Chair and commissioners, several months ago, the Planning Commission recommended approval to the City Council of a zoning ordinance text amendment to allow indoor recreational uses in the light manufacturing and heavy manufacturing zones. The City Council adopted that ordinance, and tonight we are back to add the same provisions to the Clearwater East, Clearwater East Pacific Plan area. And John King will give you the details.
Thank you, John. Thank you, Commissioner Chair Brago and commissioners. Like John Carver mentioned, this is just bringing consistency to a, an area that has some industrial type buildings or warehouse buildings, bringing it consistent with the, our traditional M-zone properties, M-one and M-two. M-one is light manufacturing, M-two heavy. And you'll be recommending, if you think this, this works, you would recommend to the City Council to adopt a Z O T A, zoning ordinance text amendment to, to make these changes. And we'll go over that, that area, Clearwater East area. On this slide, it shows the, the area. It's basically the Paramount Swamit and Bianchi Theaters and some other properties in there, the church for one. Some backgrounds, what is a specific plan? So we have our municipal code, which is our traditional regulations for the city, and we have our zoning code or zoning ordinance within the municipal code. A specific plan is a more dynamic type of regulatory tool that further, like this says, furthers a vision for a specified area and implements the general plan. Well, in simpler terms, it's more, a more interesting type of regulations, there are more graphics, it's a little more user-friendly, and it, and it really focuses on a particular area. And you can see this area, it's so, more specifically, it's south of Rosecrans, north of Somerset Boulevard, west of Paramount Boulevard, and east of the Union Pacific Rail Right-of-Way. This area came about, the specific plan called Clearwater East, came about in nineteen-eighty-seven. The City Council adopted it then, and it's still, still on the books. It's been amended here and there for very small issues. But last year it was a pretty, pretty major. It was an amendment to allow housing within this area, and that's looking down the road. First of all, we had to comply with state law and meet our obligations with our housing element, and then also looking ahead to our future light rail station at the intersection of Rosecrans and Paramount. So we're planning, just like we do, planning for the future. So back to this amendment, indoor recreation and warehousing rings consistency, and for both of these issues, in two thousand and eighteen, the City Council, following the Planning Commission's recommendation, imposed a requirement, a conditional use permit requirement for warehouse businesses, warehouse and distribution. At the time, the, the thought really was along the lines of sustainability and, and the health of residents, to take a closer look at impacts of trucking. I think that was the major issue, diesel for, for the most part. So it gives you, and as the Planning Commission, the opportunity to, to look at these issues. Before that, warehouses would, for the most part, be permitted with, with just a business license. And, and then as John Carver mentioned, earlier this year, the City Council adopted the ordinance allowing indoor recreation businesses with a conditional use permit. And here's some examples, there's many, many types. So some of these are, could be nonprofits, some of these can be for-profit, but examples here are indoor soccer, looks like some type of indoor fitness, kickboxing session on a court, and there's gymnastics. We've seen badminton indoor, indoor playgrounds. There's, there's a lot. I mean, we, we probably haven't seen all of them. I mean, it's kind of limitless. So with that, we, we feel that this is, there are some warehouse-type uses. Predominantly, we're mostly around the, where the sheriff's station is, the, the area there within the, the specific plan. So we're recommending that you adopt this resolution, to recommend to the council, the City Council, that they approve Z O T A nineteen establishing this recreation, these regulations for the Clearwater East Pacific Plan area. And that concludes my presentation. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, John. Any questions?
This is Commissioner Bautista, I do have some questions regarding changing the, the Z O T A number nineteen. In the future, as we plan for the future, is there any availability to have some subsidy for either private businesses or nonprofit businesses, or is there any opportunity for that in the future?
A subsidy, that, that could be something, I mean, try, I'm thinking of larger cities that they subsidize, say, a hotel, they, with the thought that in the long run, there's, there's some kind of financial payoff to assist them get up and running. Traditionally, we don't, we haven't done that very much in Paramount. I think larger cities have more of that, that ability, but there could be some, some opportunities as the state makes some changes to, to, to give us more, more tools to do those, those types of possibilities.
And then just another thing, I was, as I travel, because as you guys know, I travel with a lot of kids through the year, you know, when we visit places like Las Vegas, or Cerritos, or Brea, they've incorporated a lot of their cities, whether it's through the park system, or, or even like a zoning like this, where we've seen literally like a park or some type of, of sports complex, where either baseball, or football, or soccer, literally like in the middle of a residence, and then the surrounding area, businesses that are thriving, the residents are enjoying the park, and then when people, there's tournaments or other events, community events, whether it's concerts or sports events, it's like this multi-use that we're seeing like in cities like, like Vegas, or Brea, or Cerritos, or even cities like, that are not too far from us, like Bell Gardens, which actually grew up playing soccer in, in Bell, in Bell Gardens, and back then, in, in the late eighties and the early nineties, Ford Park in the city of Bell Gardens, I don't know if you guys are familiar, we used to call it in Spanish, el Parque de los Patos, which translates to, to the duck park, because there used to be a lot of, a lot of ducks in the area, and that's where we, you know, Commissioner Bautista had some of his glorious moments as a fifth grader and winning championships. But what I'm trying to get at is, it went from a city or a community where the park was literally just dirt, and now it's, it's a really a state-of-the-art, a small complex that now the community enjoys, but also it attracts businesses and people from all over the southeast region.
Right, if I could, uh, address that, that, probably the best opportunity for something like that is in the, the Clearwater East specific plan area. You're gonna review probably in about a year, an amendment to that specific plan area that will call for a mix of uses, open space, housing, restaurant, retail, and this is all tied to the, to the, the station, the light rail station at Paramount and Rosecrans. So that's probably the best opportunity for something like what you're describing, that potentially there'd be open space for, for concerts and, and, and potentially for athletic events also.
Yeah, and just to wrap up my question, was that if, if there is an opportunity for those?
Sure.
Those things in the future, and hopefully we can take also a look at other cities that already have established this, so we can get some ideas and, and not just like, when it's our turn, sort of just shoot from the hip.
Right.
We're really grasping as, as many ideas as possible.
Thank you for that. Thank you very much.
John, I do have another question. If we approve this zoning ordinance, the indoor recreation, we wouldn't be limiting C U Ps for indoor recreation only in this zone?
That, that's right. There are a number of uses already permitted by conditional use permit in this area. This just adds to, to that list. It gives it the option. I, I want to say about a year ago, we had a, which I, I think would, would fall under indoor recreation, we had a proposal for a cheerleading group, was it a cheerleader training?
Right, yes.
And that, that sounded like a good fit, but we had a, unfortunately, we had to turn them away because in this area, actually, it might have been before it was adopted in the other zones, it, it's just, it didn't fit, we couldn't not make it, we could not make it fit into our, our code at the time. We let them know, why don't you be patient, we're gonna be changing our, our M-one and M-two zones, but you know, you're running a business, you, you want to go where, where you, you can immediately fall in.
Right, and I think you're looking citywide.
Yeah, citywide, so, and what I'm saying is, outside of the Clearwater, can they still apply for it?
Yes.
And so this is just adding this area to that.
Right.
So we're expanding the indoor recreation.
That's correct.
Zoning.
So it, it was, it was expanded in the M-one and M-two zone, so right now you can apply for a C U P in the M-one and M-two, and as you just said, we're expanding it now.
Okay, perfect. Yeah, that makes sense, because the indoor recreation, I mean, if, if you're allowing industrial or manufacturing, why not indoor recreation? It's just, okay, just want to make sure we're not limiting it.
I have one more question, also within this new zoning area, would it also allow for businesses, if we were gonna build more housing, for businesses to go, let's say, on the lower or the first floor, and then residents on top?
That, that's something that we'll be looking at, and that could be part of the plan, yes, in the future.
Okay.
Any other questions, commissioners? This is a public hearing, so I'd like to hear if there's anyone in favor or opposed of this.
No comments.
No comments, thank you. Can I get a motion to close this public hearing, Amendment Number Nineteen?
This is Commissioner Bautista, I'll move to close.
Thank you. Second.
Commissioner Gutierrez, I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Bautista?
Yes.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Yes.
Commissioner Weisenberger?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice Chair Sparza?
Yes.
Commissioner Chair Brago?
Yes. Next is get a motion to adopt the Planning Commission Resolution Number P C two-zero-zero-three-six.
Commissioner Gutierrez, I'll motion to approve.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
Sparza, second. Roll call.
Commissioner Bautista?
Yes.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Yes.
Commissioner Weisenberger?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice Chair Sparza?
Yes.
Commissioner Chair Brago?
Yes. Next item is Conditional Use Permit Number Eight-nine-four, a request by Erica Guztalo, Art Pro Tools, Inc. Incorporated, to operate a, and a direct importer and distributor of hand tools and general merchandise business at seven-one-one-zero Rosecrans Avenue, Suite one-oh-one, in the M-one light manufacturing zone.
Yes, Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair and members of the commission, this is a request for another warehouse on Rosecrans Avenue, and John King will go over this item with you.
Thank you again, commissioners. Before I forget to point this out, planning attorney Christian Santana worked on, on the, the report and, and the presentation, so, so it's because of our limited staffing, he's, he's in the back working the, the knobs, so, the ones and twos. So Conditional Use Permit Number Eight-nine-four, so it's a request to, again, operate a direct importer and distributor of hand tools, and seventy-one-eleven Rosecrans. You, you might remember this, the old location of McLean Mowers, M-one zone, and they're proposing to operate anywhere from eight A.M. to five P.M. Monday to Friday, and then eight A.M. to one P.M. on Saturdays. They would have up to ten employees, as far as the trucks, the deliveries in, in and out, no more than five bobtail trucks with fifty-three-foot trailers each day. They'd have scheduled UPS pickups twice every week, and they also average, they're anticipating six individual customer vehicles each day, and then as far as shipments coming in from the port, four to six times a month. Here's an overhead view, this is Rosecrans Avenue running east and west, and you'll, kind of interesting location, it's just to the east of, of the parks, Manny Park, across the street from the Californian Estates Mobile Home Park, and the other side is the, is the Edison Right-of-Way, running north and south. So, oh, and the property's in blue, and the building is in, outlined in red. Here's a look at the building, parking lot in the front. You might remember, up, up to a few years ago, it was, it was a little shabby, it was on like a yellowish, tannish color, needed a good coat of paint. Well, a new property owner stepped in, acquired it, and looks pretty nice, yeah, very contemporary look. They used to have a terrible-looking fence, and they, they put up a new, new fence in the front as well. Here's how it looks on the inside, so it's ready to go, and with that, we are recommending approval, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from our commissioners? I have a question, John. Is this gonna be open to the public, similar to like J R Tools, like right here on Paramount before the nine-one freeway?
The applicant hasn't mentioned that. If they do, like, if it's very incidental, we, we consider like about ten percent of sales, no outdoor displays, it's, it's not a big deal.
Okay. I know that there is a place right here on Rosecrans near Sam's Roofing, I believe, they pretty much take everything out and they put everything back in, I think.
That would not be possible.
Okay, okay, just checking. All right, this, this is an open hearing, so do we have anyone that's in favor or opposed?
No comments.
All right, can I get a motion to close this public hearing for permit number, Conditional Use Permit Eight-nine-four?
This is Commissioner Bautista, I'll see what the motion to close.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Gordon. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Bautista?
Yes.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Yes.
Commissioner Weisenberger?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice Chair Sparza?
Yes.
Commissioner Chair Brago?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, can I get a motion to adopt Planning Commission Resolution Number P C two-zero-zero-three-five?
Commissioner Gutierrez, I'll motion to approve.
Thank you. Sparza will second it? Sparza, second. Roll call.
Commissioner Bautista?
Yes.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Yes.
Commissioner Weisenberger?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice Chair Sparza?
Yes.
Commissioner Chair Brago?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next item on the list is holiday events schedule.
Yes, so included in your agenda is a schedule for December for the holiday events. As we were talking, I'm not sure if every commissioner was back there, while the Christmas train, it's identified that, that certain nights belong to certain commissions, the commissioners won't be riding the train this year, it's only going to be the council that rides it each month, and they won't be stopping, they'll just be driving slowly the route. So I just want to make that clear, that no commission will be riding the train this year.
Thank you, John. Tree lighting is not in here, right?
Uh, tree lighting should, oh, that's, um...
On the previous month?
Uh, right, toward the end of November.
Okay. That's gonna be virtual, YouTube?
I would guess it's going to have to be, right.
Okay. Next, next item, any, oh, any questions on Christmas program?
That's in November, not December?
Yes.
Is it normally in November?
It is, usually, right after Thanksgiving.
They'll be giving out candy canes and apples, right?
They're gonna do a, like a, a drive-through event to do that, right? Yeah, you did, okay.
David, he says they're scheduling something.
Right, okay.
Seven-thirteen, plus also for the breakfast with Santa.
Right.
Out the back.
Well, the, yeah, the breakfast with Santa will be like a, a drive-through, too, the way I understand it.
Oh, drive-through.
Yeah.
All right, next report, our next item is oral report, City Council actions.
Yes, so last week, the City Council reviewed, took a second look at an ordinance that the Planning Commission had recommended approval of, that was for electronic signs, for gas station pricing, and for electronic window signs, and they did approve that, that ordinance, and that was the only item related to the Planning Commission.
Thank you, John. Any comments from our city attorney, John?
No comments from me, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Thank you.
Other than have a nice Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Different, okay, commissioners?
No.
Nope.
Nothing?
Nothing.
Yes, I, I guess everyone, we're, it's gonna be a lot different this year, our Thanksgiving, so, it's gonna be a lot, everyone's gonna be so close together with their immediate families, enjoy your Thanksgiving. So I'd like to adjourn this meeting. Next meeting will be on December eighth, two thousand and twenty, at six P.M.
Okay.
The Paramount.
Let's go, Bernie. Review board. He has one, he has one, thank you.
Roll call of members, please.
Board Member Brago?
Here.
Board Member Bautista?
Here.
Board Member Weisenberger?
Here.
Board Vice Chair Gutierrez?
Present.
Board Chair Sparza?
Here. Okay, item one is the minutes, I need a motion to approve the minutes of October thirteen, Make a motion to approve the development review minutes of October thirteen, two thousand and twenty.
This is Commissioner Bautista, I'll second that motion.
Approve this second.
Board Member Brago?
Yes.
Board Member Bautista?
Yes.
Board Member Weisenberger?
Yes.
Board Vice Chair Gutierrez?
Yes.
Board Chair Sparza?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any public comment?
No public comments.
New business item two is D R A number twenty-oh-one-three, and that's a request by Mike Cross, Cross Construction, to remodel and convert a house to a commercial building at one-six-two-oh-six Minnesota Avenue in the M-two heavy manufacturing zone. Report, please.
Yes, Mr. Chair, John King will give you the details on this application.
Mr. John, key board chair Sparza? Board Chair Sparza and board members. Cross Construction, so this is over on Minnesota to remodel and convert a house. It's in the middle of the industrial area, so through time, it's probably a good idea to have the houses kind of transition their way into other industrial uses, so there's not that strange mix. M two zone, and I guess we call that the central industrial district. It's a little over a thousand square feet. So the applicant also owns the adjacent property to the south, one six two one two Minnesota Avenue, and intends to merge both properties to a single lot, and then in the future, come back to the Planning Commission for a conditional use permit for outdoor storage. The applicant is a contractor. So at the top is how it looked a few months ago. The building on the left is the house that's part of this project. The building on the right is another house on the other property that they demolished, the applicant demolished with permits. They did actually, they kind of jumped the gun and got to work on this project without permits, so they have since halted work, and you could see that they've been, this couple of weeks ago, they taped it up to keep it weatherproof as we get into the possible rain. And this next slide is the site plan. So the left is Minnesota, running north and south. The back is an alley. There's a number of parking stalls that exceeds what's required. They would have landscape planters in the front, have some really nice drought-tolerant landscaping. They have some planters proposed for the sides, and plenty of area from the back for their outdoor storage, but they would first need that conditional use permit to do that the right way. Here's how it would look. So it would be very contemporary design, looks nice. So mostly stucco, small area of metal siding at the front entry with a decorative metal cover or awning as an accent, some decorative light fixtures on there. At the top is what we call it, is a cornice, so it gives some, breaks up the roof line a little bit, some multi-level roof lines, and you'll see those lines on the stucco area, those are called reveals, so again, it just breaks up, so it's not a mass of a wall. And yeah, it would be an improvement to the area, and that's why we're recommending approval, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions from any commissioner? I have a question. John, do you know what they're going to be storing once they come back for the CUP? What do they want to store?
Construction equipment, so let me think. They specialize in flat work, so concrete curbs and ADA, Americans with Disabilities Act improvements to building features. So you could imagine some combination of, well, general construction materials, wood and metal and concrete.
Thanks.
Just Commissioner Batista, I have a question. When you mentioned that they sort of jumped the gun there, were they like cited, or what was the repercussion?
As a matter of fact, yes. There are two different ways. So a building inspector issued a stop-work notice, and the Code Enforcement Division of the Public Safety Department, they issued notices of violation for, I think, maybe three? Notices of violation, were there three? One notice of violation and three stop-work notices. So they have since stopped work.
Yeah, I saw that. I passed by there today, and I saw that they had jumped the gun. Any other questions?
I do have a question. It looks like they're combining two lots, is that correct, that I seen in the drawings?
That is right. They have not submitted the application yet, but that's something that does not go to the Planning Commission review. It goes, the city engineer is the point person on that.
What's on the other lot? Do they already own that, or they plan on acquiring it?
Oh, yeah, good question. They do own that, and right now it's vacant. So they did get permits for the demolition, and they did demolish the house that was on that property.
Okay, is there...
They're very similar. If you look, I'll go back to the photo. They, I would imagine the top photo, it was a common owner for both properties. They look just so similar. And, you know, through time, you end up selling to different people. This property owner bought both, and take it from there.
I have a concern. You know, the last resolution we passed over at the warehouse at Alondra next to Home Depot, to me, it seems that even though this is more of an industrial area, and if I was the owner, I would probably gear towards doing the same thing, but given the fact that on the last resolution, we are gearing more towards housing, and sort of we have to vote a yes on this, but in this specific scenario, this specific owner sort of went the other way, getting rid of potential, some more homes in the area to something more industrial. It's just something for me, there is a concern, and I would look into it just a little more before I, you know, if my colleagues want to make a decision today, it's fine. For me, I don't think, I think I would need a little more.
Yeah, well, I think one thought would be, that is a point. There would definitely be a loss of housing. It actually has not been, I checked the water records, it hasn't been used for housing in years. It was more just storage. It's zoned for manufacturing, the general plan is manufacturing. If it were to continue as housing, you're right, it would provide a home for somebody, but at the same time, it's, on the other hand, it's surrounded by industrial uses that have some amount of noise and other issues, and it would be kind of an island within a sea of industry, so.
And Board Member Batista, you were referring to the ten-unit housing development next to Home Depot, right? So that one's a little different. That was kind of a, that was kind of an island of industrial with residential surrounding it, so it made sense to go residential for that strip. In this case, it's in the central industrial district, so it's buried. In this case, it would make sense to eliminate housing because of the heavy industrial surrounding it.
Okay.
Yeah, I would just make a further comment. I'm actually familiar with the area, and there's a couple houses that are eyesores because they really shouldn't be there, but they're grandfathered in.
Yes.
Is, I believe, this is not too far from where there's like, there was an old liquor store right across from Manhattan. Are you guys familiar with it?
Yes.
It was like a market. Is that still standing?
Yeah, well, it's vacant.
So vacant, but you should drive by. It really doesn't make sense to have homes. You don't want to have homes. There are really, there are a few, but like you said, they're in eyesore. They really shouldn't be there. So I get where, where, remember, Batista has that concern, but yeah, it really doesn't, the homes don't look good there.
And then, yeah, just the second concern is, they want to store, what other, what items again?
Construction materials.
All right, I was just, hopefully we don't get into like more companies trying to store more containers, and then we have, you know, the issues of like the Wilmington community of these eighteen-wheelers passing by the neighborhood.
More trucks?
More trucks.
So that's one of the things, it is industrial there, so there are trucks. It's actually a nuisance to live there, to have a home there.
Right. And Board Member, you'll be reviewing the conditional use permit for that outdoor storage, so you'll be able to, you'll be able to look at the conditions if you want to impose further conditions than we recommend. You'll have that opportunity.
And that's what I want to establish. I just want to read a little more.
Sure.
So I understand it better, for me. Thank you.
We have another one on Illinois Avenue, you know, that one, that house, it's also going to be probably demolished.
The corner?
The corner.
Right.
Because that is a commercial industrial, you know.
Yeah, so the owners have brought in some plans here and there to convert it to office or warehouse, but I don't think they can make up their minds, so eventually that will transition as well.
Yeah, it's been a while now, so, but it's just right to have a commercial building there, right next to it, you know. Anyway, let's get a motion in order to, application number two oh one three, approve it.
I will make a motion to approve this request.
I'll second it.
Been approved and seconded.
Board Member Abrego.
Yes.
Board Member Batista.
Yes.
Board Member Weisenberger.
Yes.
Board Vice Chair Gutierrez.
Yes.
Board Chair Sparza.
Yes.
Thank you.
Next item three is the DRA number two zero zero one four, and that's a request by GURDEV, and reminder, AR, I guess, that's the five-star market to demolish all existing structures and construct a five thousand eight hundred sixty-three square foot, four suite commercial building at one four one one three dash one four one one seven Downey Avenue in the planned development with performance standard zone. Report, please.
Yes, Mr. Chair, and Board Members, this is a very exciting project, and it's one that we've been waiting for to happen for many years. As you mentioned, it involves the demolition of the five-star market at the northwest corner of Downey Avenue and Elberg Street, and the construction of a multi-tenant commercial center that will include a market. And John King will give you the details.
John, similar to the conditional use permit from the Planning Commission, I'm presenting work that Planning Intern, in this case, it was Planning Intern Erica Barbero that she worked on, and she is not with us this evening. So I've got to give her all the credit due. So again, to demolish the existing structures and build a new commercial building with four suites, one would retain the, we're calling it a convenience store, and also construct three smaller suites. It'll be a lot better than how it looks now. The zone is called PDPS, which is Planned Development with Performance Standards, and again, as you know, it's on Downey between Elberg and Wilbourn. The lot is a little over twenty thousand square feet. And here it is. So this is the overhead view, helicopter or satellite view, I'm not quite sure. But, yeah, so between those two streets, Elberg and Wilbourn, west of Downey, the property is outlined in red and shaded in, and one interesting thing, many interesting things, but one in particular, at the northeast portion, or the northwest, I'm sorry, there is another, there's a house that's part of this project. The property owner acquired that home a few years back with the intention to fold it into this project, and that's what they intend to do. They would demolish that home, demolish the market. And in the purplish area, that's, well, the purplish area, that's where the existing main market is. Here it is. So it's probably not the most attractive building in Paramount. I think most of us would agree. And we all have our opinions on appearances, but yeah, there's bars in the windows, lots of advertising for alcoholic drinks, and faded signage, and the roof falling apart, and probably, and actually, we know that some of the building is unpermitted. So that would all go. It would all be remedied by demolition. And here's some views looking south, looking east. They have a message spray painted on the fence about parking. And here's how it would look. This is the proposed site plan, so kind of an odd-shaped building, but that's due to the shape of the lot in general, and to fit the parking lot, to make that work. We have some nice landscaping. Let me go back a couple spots. There's no landscaping along the frontage now, but we'll end up with a nice ten-foot planter with trees, other drought-tolerant landscaping, plenty of parking, two ADA compliant parking stalls, Americans with Disabilities Act, and there's trash enclosure on the north side. On the south portion, the bottom portion where it kind of bulbs out, that's where the convenience store would be. Here's how it would look. So huge improvement. You'll see the entry tower with the elevated roof line, has a cornice with the darker color in this, these renderings, some accent paint colors, some accents, some decorative light fixtures, decorative stone, stacked stone veneer, and storefront windows. Yeah, so nice job here from the architect. The applicant would also be participating in the city's commercial rehabilitation program, and I gave credit to Planning Intern Erica Barbero, but I've got to give a lot of credit to the man sitting next to me, the city attorney, and also the city prosecutor. He's worked very hard with Public Safety to get the owners on board and get them into compliance. So if you have any questions, I'm here to answer them, and if you want some backstory, he's here as well to answer those questions.
I have a question, John.
Any questions?
Yes. Will they continue to want to sell alcohol at that market?
They will. The alcoholic beverage license kind of runs with the land there, and as of now, they're in good standing with ABC, the Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control.
They just won't advertise like they're doing now, where the signs all over the place?
That's right. They'd have to, definitely have to meet current standards.
Commissioner Batista, I have a question. So this project would still be under the hands of the same owner, the same current owner?
The same owner, yes.
And then is there a proposed date for this project to start?
Well, they are, they're obligated to do some beginning by the end of this year. If you want to speak to that?
Thank you, John. Yes.
Sorry.
No, that's okay, Commissioner. I know that this is probably a project everybody in the city has been looking at, and our office has been, needless to say, has had an interesting spiritual, spirited relationship with the property owners over the last several years, and it's been a milestone to get them where they are right now. I think both John Carver and John King are probably pulling their hair out as far as the number of times we've had them come in and then pull out. But we kind of made an informal deal with them, and basically it was, this case was in our office, and we were working with them to try to get the property maintained at least. I know that it doesn't look very good on there, but it really was looking bad. There was a lot of vegetation in the back, and we were basically telling them, keep the property at least maintained until the time that you're able to propose a project to planning. And when that time came, we basically shifted over to planning for them to do that. Then apparently, something stalled, and then we got back involved again. And then it wasn't too long ago that we had a nice meeting, should I say, and I basically made them an offer they could not refuse. And so what we're hoping to have them accomplish, this was a big accomplishment, I must say. I mean, it was a big one. But what we're hoping to do is to at least have the demolition done before the end of the year, so that building is gone, and then we can work forward to get the construction moving on. We basically have said that if they don't move forward on that, I'm taking it back into our office, and then we're going to do what we have to do, and I told them that's not going to be nice. So I think we're moving forward in a really good manner, and I do appreciate all the departments working with our office to get this to you today.
All right.
So, yes, thank you.
One of the questions that I have, excuse me, is, since there's going to be a market there now, is the problem that I think that apartment housing has across the street is they don't have a crosswalk, and there's a lot of people really that have been almost run over there, especially at night. But I don't know if Public Works should come up with some crosswalk or something, because there's a lot of people that cross to the market. Because that's a historic market, really. I mean, it is. You have to say it. What can I tell you? But anyway, I just thought I'd bring that up.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, we can refer that over to Public Works Department.
Public Works, would you, please?
And report back to you.
I was going to mention that that building hasn't even really had a roof. I've seen tarps on it for the last couple of years. And the city get involved when there's no roof, and there's a tarp for numerous years? I mean, I would think a tarp's going to be for a couple of months, not a couple of years. Yeah. That's good. It looks like it's going to definitely better the area. And a crosswalk, I actually want to be back, is that market's been there for a really long time, and it's about a block north of the high school, so there's a lot of traffic, a lot of kids going back and forth, so actually, that's not a bad recommendation if we can bring that up to the, what is it? Public Works, yeah. Just for public safety, because I know that they did the fencing twenty years ago for the high school, right?
Right.
So they're not crossing the street. Something similar should go in there, just for public safety reasons.
Any other questions? Okay. Motion in order to approve, application number twenty oh one four.
A motion to approve.
I'll second. This is Abrego.
Board Member Abrego.
Yes.
Board Member Batista.
Yes.
Board Member Weisenberger.
Yes.
Board Vice Chair Gutierrez.
Yes.
Board Chair Sparza.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
Comments from Board Members? Staff?
No comments.
Paramount Development Review Board is adjourned till, um, December eighth, 2020 at six P M.
All right. I'd like to, um, open the Paramount Economic Development Board, call the meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Thank you. Board Member Abrego?
Here.
Board Member Sparza?
Here.
Board Member Gutierrez? Board Vice Chair Bautista?
Here.
Board Chair Weisenberg?
Here.
Thank you.
Approval of minutes? Get a motion to approve?
This is Commissioner Bautista. A motion to approve?
Second?
I'll second.
I'll Abrego.
But. Roll call, please.
Board Member Abrego?
Yes.
Board Member Sparza?
Yes.
Board Member Gutierrez?
Yes.
Board Vice Chair Bautista?
Yes.
Board Chair Weisenberg?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any public comments?
No public comments.
Okay. New, new business? None? Reports then, please.
Uh, yes. Uh, so John King's going to give you a report on the, a specific plan that we're working on right now, north of Rosecrans, uh, called the North Paramount Boulevard Gateway Specific Plan.
Thank you. Thank you, Board Chair Weisenberg, Board Members. Um, you'll notice on the, on this slide, there's a little icon or little logo for this area. So you're the first to see it. So congratulations, North Paramount Gateway. I'll go close up in a second. Um, here's the area. So we talked about earlier this evening was with the planning commission about the Clearwater East specific plan area. Well, now this is another specific plan area that we just, um, started, started reworking. We, we kicked it off a few weeks ago. Um, we're calling it the North Paramount Gateway. And its origins are in, if you looked at, on this slide, there's, there's two, um, specific plan areas that are in, in place, came about in 1987. Uh, one's called Clearwater North and it's on the, um, the west side of Paramount Boulevard, north of, uh, Rosecrans. And then there's this other area called Howe Orizaba, which is on the other side of Paramount Boulevard. And, um, so the idea for this new plan is combine them together. They're, they're a little outdated. So they were, they came about in the eighties. If they're, if you go online to the municipal code and you could see them, it's very text-based and very dry. Um, they're also a little bit irrelevant in the, um, and what I mean by that is in the late eighties, the, um, Paramount voters voted in a proposition, a local proposition, which limited housing density to 22 units per acre. And by doing that, it kind of, it's still in the books, but it invalidates, that voter initiative invalidated most of, um, what was on, in these plans. So you might, you, you're familiar with some of the larger housing projects that came about in 1980s. The, it's now called the Enclave, right, right next to, um, at the border at Southgate where the Popeyes and I think it's a Shell station, um, the Enclave and some other apartment buildings south of that. Those were under, um, that plan. Well, you can't, you can't do that now because of the, um, the limit of 22 units per acre. Here it is. So this, we're going to roll this out before long. We're doing kind of, at this point, it's more behind the scenes work, gathering information and data, economic data and past plans and, um, information about these neighborhoods. But it'll combine what you see here. Um, icons kind of tell it all. Walkability, um, dining, outdoor, kind of a lively area, office and retail and housing and, and transit. And a lot of it's based on, um, something that the planning commission and the city council reviewed a year ago or a year and a half ago, the Paramount Southgate Station Area Plan. That was a study for half-mile areas around two, the two planned light rail stations here. One, one in Paramount proper at Paramount and Rosecrans and the other Paramount adjacent, um, at the Green Line, um, it would be a transfer station. So they were reviewed earlier last year and included in the vision plan, included a portion of the North Paramount area. So it gives us a little, uh, framework for what we're doing with, with this project. There's some photos of some outreach that went on with the, uh, we had a workshop and some pop-ups at, um, at the swap, at the, um, farmer's market. Lot of kind of rings in this, on this map, but just to kind of walk you through it, you'll see Rosecrans and Paramount. There's a little icon where the future station, station is going to be, the little rail line right at that intersection. And you could see the, that dashed line where the railroad, light railroad, light, right away will be. And it curves upwards and north and on its way to, um, Union Station in downtown Los Angeles. This includes portions of Southgate in this map. The center ring is, um, shows the two areas, Clearwater North and Howe Orizaba that will be combined into this new plan. And there's some goals. Here's what we're, we're looking for, to develop, develop a contemporary, user-friendly plan, something with, that you could, the average person could open up and, and understand. So graphics and may, just kind of break it down, make it, make it easy for the, um, everyday use. Um, another goal is to reduce vehicle miles traveled. And that's something that comes up in the engineering world and, and cities. So, uh, the goal is to reduce, just like it says, cars, car travel basically. So increase walking, increase, uh, biking and local trips and build up on the, the local economy. There'll be a mobility and parking assessment. So transportation and, you know, parking is, it's a big issue. That, some of these, these two neighborhoods are, um, have, have problems in terms of parking, as, as you can imagine. So, um, assess that and hopefully come up with some strategies. Again, take advantage of the upcoming light rail line and corridor and sustainability. We really are, we've turned a corner. We're looking more at sustainability and sustainable actions. So in terms of design, promoting, um, so in terms of architecture and the people who are going to live and work there, the community health and wellbeing. And then, you know, we're the, again, the Economic Development Board, we want to strengthen the economic vitality of businesses and people, individuals. A component of the study and plan will be to assess office, retail and residential opportunities, um, evaluating what's, what's viable. So looking around and how, how can this fill a void? What's, what are Paramount residents doing in other cities that they could do here? Um, reach out, helping to connect, um, the land and landowners with brokers and developers and do it in a way that, that's good for the Paramount community at, at large. You don't want to push people out. You want to build them up. Uh, market demand analysis. So in relation to different density, so in terms of, that, that's how much housing per acre, per, per site. Um, what, what's the demand? I did mention there is that cap of 22 units per acre, but is there an opportunity? Maybe Paramount residents would be willing to at least take a look at just, uh, at a limited level to maybe to have a higher density. But of course that would have to go back to the voters. That's, so, um, gotta be careful about that. And some final recommendations, which would go to you, the planning commission, and then move on to the city council. And it started about a month ago. So about 11 months from now. And this is the list of tasks, tasks. So we're about 1.3 right, right now. Um, there's some other work going on, um, starting on the feasibility analysis, for example. You know, we're in the world of COVID. So what we would, we would like to do, um, direct outreach, but that's probably not going to happen. It's probably going to be more Zoom meetings for the time being, but, um, hopefully things will, will change. But you'll be, um, after the holidays, come January, February, be on the lookout for some, um, meetings that we're hoping that you can help, uh, get the word out to the Paramount community at large. Here's the project team. We got funding from, um, SCAG, um, Southern California Association of Governments. And, um, at the bottom are the, our planning firms that are, that are part of this. Grun's the lead. Uh, HRNA is the economic advisors. There's an engineering group and GTS, they specialize in, um, small transit and mobility. So that's it. Giving you a sneak peek of what you'll be reviewing, um, down the road. And I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you, John. We have any questions from our group here?
This is Commissioner Bautista. I do have a question with the Clearwater East Plan for the rail station. I know, I, I heard about the rail station plant a little over a year ago. So I just wanted to refresh my memory. Is there, there's going to be an actual, uh, like station for the rail at the stop, at the stop?
Yes. So, um, I think John Carver might be more into it with the, the timeframe, but I believe there's a environmental document, the draft EIR should be available early 2021, early next year?
That, that's correct. Right. They'll be, um, Metro will, will be releasing the draft environmental impact report, uh, hopefully in January. Um, but could be February. And then there'll be a, um, an approximate year comment period on the draft environmental impact report.
And what I mean by an actual, uh, station, like.
Yes.
By question, an actual building or more of a?
Uh, it'll be an elevated station. Uh, so it'll, um, it'll, uh, at Paramount Park, it'll, it'll go up and over the, uh, intersection of Paramount and Rosecrans. And then there will be a station on the north side of Rosecrans, um, an elevated station.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. The idea is to have it open for, time for the Olympics, they're saying, and Metro is saying, so 2028, um, the groundbreaking 2023?
2023 is when they hope to start, uh, the project.
There we go. Any other questions? Comments? From staff?
Uh, no comments.
Okay. Then I guess we're going to adjourn the meeting and we will reconvene on December eighth.